I'd like to call the order this Board of Supervisors meeting. If everyone could please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America, due to the public religious stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as one.
Thank you. And before we move on to roll call, I actually wanted to ask everyone to just join me in a moment of silence for the tragedies that took place in Bucks County over the weekend with the flooding, for all those that lives were unfortunately lost, and those who are still searching for the two missing children. Can you please call roll?
Ms. Payne?
Here.
Ms. Corporal?
Here.
Ms. Kane?
Here.
Mr. Kiesak?
Here.
Also in attendance, we have Ms. Tealie Cool, Township Manager; Mr. Esposito, Township Solicitor; Mr. Valla, Assistant Township Manager; Mr. Kessler, Township Engineer; Chief of Police, Joseph Barterillo; Director of Building and Zoning, Jim Ennis; Director of Parks and Recreation, Paul Capero; Director of Finance, Megga Bondry.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. A few quick announcements. Our next Board of Supervisors meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 14, 2023, at 7:00 PM, right here in the municipal office. We also have National Night Out, which I know is one of my favorite events, coming up Tuesday, August 1, at 5:30 to 8:30, right here in the parking lot. We have Movie in the Park, and they're showing the movie Wreck-It Ralph, Thursday, August 3. Activities start at 6:45, and the movie starts at dusk at Community Park. We also have a Flyers' Caravan coming, Tuesday, August 8, from 3:00 PM to 5:30 at Versinthea Crossing Park. I also wanted to congratulate everyone here in the team for five years in a row receiving a distinguished budget award from the Government Finance Officers Association. That's our fifth year in a row for receiving this award, and I know it's actually pretty hard to receive, so congrats to the team and the staff. Also, Lower Silver Lake Road, I believe, is still closed due to the storms this past weekend. Next, moving right along, we have a special proclamation, and Ms. Hannah, could you read our proclamation?
For Disability Pride Month? Proclamation recognizing July 2023 as Disability Pride Month in Middletown Township, whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act was passed on July 26, 1990, to prohibit discrimination against people with disabilities and to ensure the rights of citizens with disabilities. And whereas Disability Pride Month is celebrated nationally during the month of July to recognize the anniversary of the passage of this important legislation. And whereas the township of Middletown recognizes that one of its greatest strengths is the diversity of its people, and whereas disabled individuals contribute to our community's success and strength in an immeasurable number of ways. And whereas the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors created a Human Relations Commission in 2020 to express its commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion in our organization and our community, and therefore be it proclaimed that July is designated as Disability Pride Month in Middletown Township. And we, the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors, encourage all people in our community to promote the elimination of discriminatory policies and practices toward any group of people. Middletown Township Board of Supervisors proclaim this day, the 17th of July, 2023. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Next, we'll have public comment. This is on non-agenda items only, so if you have a public comment, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Tim Burns, 104 Banks Road. First of all, thank you for all that you guys do, and it is Silver Lake Road that is still closed. We had the kayaks out the other night, so. Wanted to address something that is going on near Banks Road, near that general area. Recently, the approval came down for a Wawa. It is in Newtown. I understand, and I fully concede, that that is Newtown's land. Newtown can do as they wish. Wawa has Wawa money, as you know, we all saw in Pendell a couple of years ago, that they will do as they please. I've spoken with a few residents, and a few of the concerns that we've had was, first and foremost, the traffic. When the construction starts, it is a much easier path to that Wawa, to come up Woodburn, make a right on Lower Silver Lake, and go up there. Now, as you may or may not know, a majority of Lower Silver Lake Road is Middletown, and then the other half is Newtown. So we, you know, it's my assumption that we're going to see quite an increase of construction traffic head on up there. A thought that I had, we not let construction vehicles on Middletown portion of Lower Silver Lake. You know, if Newtown wants to build, they can build on their roads. Moving forward from that, the residential traffic, again, it's a much easier path to go Woodburn to Lower Silver Lake up to the Newtown bypass. Anyone who has traveled the Newtown bypass knows it can be a heavy traffic area, there's a lot of roadwork that goes on, as to be expected from that kind of road. The worry that a lot of the residents down there are having right now is Newtown will see benefit from this in the form of tax revenue, employment, development, you know, a number of things that I'm sure I don't need to explain to this board. What Middletown will see, in my opinion, is an impact in a negative way. We will get all of the traffic coming down Lower Silver Lake to Woodburn. There's a new traffic light there, coming that direction, there is no turn on red, there is no turning lane, and there's no room to put one in. Traffic has already gotten a touch heavier in the more busy times of the day. The increase of a Wawa, anybody who's been to Wawa, we know what Wawa traffic looks like. So I guess my question to the board, to, you know, whomever it may pertain, is, is there anything that we can do, or any conversation that we can have with the developer, with Newtown, with whomever it may be, to maybe not minimize the impact, but to mitigate it, in the sense that we seem to be seeing the negative impact of this Wawa coming through with none of the added benefit that Newtown will get? And I will also add that the placement of this new Wawa is maybe 1,000 feet from where Core Creek runs, and as of last weekend, overflowed its banks. All of that rain went off, all of that drainage, any kind of flood, any kind of spill, any kind of leak comes right onto Middletown, and that's our land, that's our forest area, that is our creek that then flows into Lake Luxembourg, that's our problem to deal with. Now, I'm sure Wawa has insurance, I'm sure they have Wawa money, but I'd really rather not find out what their environmental insurance looks like, so I don't know if that's something that could be addressed or discussed here, or if I need to speak to a different body about that.
I'd just say thank you for coming and voicing this. I know, the team knows, this is something that I've been aware of, and asking the team what we can do potentially. I live up in that area. So, again, we're going to try to monitor the situation, and if it comes to it, you know, figure out how we can mitigate the traffic, because we know that it's going to be increased. So we'll keep an eye on that light, the timing of that light, as well as any other, you know, mitigation efforts that we can do if we start seeing that cut-through traffic.
And I think the only other thing that might be worth mentioning back there is, there was recently a proposal of a four-story apartment complex off of University Drive. If you're familiar with the area, I know you know of it. Now, again, Newtown land, Newtown can do what they please. I'm pretty sure if you jumped off the balcony of one of these apartment buildings, you could land in Middletown pretty easily, it'll be that close. This developer will be using the rules, the regulations, however it may be, that Wawa just used to get theirs approved, to appeal the apartment complex as well. So just to kind of put to the front of mind, you know, prior to having to have that fight after the approval. So, but I do thank you for your time, and I thank you for the service.
I just want to jump in on a couple of things there. With the Wawa, the settlement has been approved, but they still need to go through the full review of the engineer plans and approval. So what we can do is, I will talk to, and the township manager will talk to TPD, the Township Traffic Engineer, to try and see if they can talk to the traffic engineer in Newtown, see if they can do anything and cooperate with them, you know, to see if we can help the traffic flow at all. As far as the other apartments, we are in contact with Newtown Solicitor and the attorney for the developer about that process. Newtown is, you know, opposing it, so it is their ordinance, it's a joint ordinance, it gets a little difficult, but we are monitoring that situation as well.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other public comment on non-agenda items? Please state your name and address for the record.
Andrew Kelly, 67 Queen Lily Road. Just one simple question, what's Waste Management doing anymore? They're not collecting when they're scheduled, and they're not collecting sometimes at all. So I'm just wondering why, since, actually, since July 4th holiday, they've been off, they've missed complete, like, for as far as the waste, yard waste, they haven't been picking it up. The recycle's when they feel like, and even the trash, sometimes two, three days later. And this time of year, it gets pretty ripe fast. So I'm just wondering why it hasn't been looked into.
Can you tell me your address again, sir?
67 Queen Lily Road, that's in Quincy Hollow.
Okay. We'll definitely look into that. Anytime we have a complaint related to trash collection, we will get in touch with Waste Management, and they typically will handle it. So if you're having an ongoing problem, the best thing to do...
Well, it's the whole section, because I usually walk around in the morning, and you can smell or see it, so.
Okay, well, we'll definitely take a look at that.
All right, thank you.
Any other public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, I will move on to the consent agenda items. At this time, I would accept a motion for approval of the consent agenda items as stated on the agenda.
I make a motion to approve all consent agenda items as stated on the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Are there any questions from the board?
I just had one quick question on "aye." It looks like there's a pretty considerable change order, $90,000 for the Public Works Building, Phase 1, so I just was wanting to get some clarification on that.
Yeah, sure thing. The project at the Public Works Yard that's ongoing for the fueling operations, as it's been going into construction, and it's a fairly large project, there's been a few items that have been kind of identified and looked at as needed for, when it's all done, to have it function as desired, especially for the long term. A few of them are described in the memo that goes along with the change order, involves the concrete pad itself, you know, being bumped out a little wider. It involves the fueling dispensers to have an additional one on the side, so two rather than one. And these items, we tried to identify as best we could, kind of in the design phase, as it's getting ready, but these have kind of come to fruition as it's been in construction. So I agree with you, it's a, you know, a decent amount, but we anticipate that this would get the project even to, not even, but like, where it needs to be to get to completion without additional adds as it moves along.
Are there any other questions?
No question, just a quick comment. I just want to say that I'm pleased that we are approving the resolution to request the multimodal transportation grant for the Langhorn Yard, the road, Maple Point Drive, pedestrian crossing project. This is something that I've been asking for for a while, it's something that residents have been pushing for. It's a high-traffic pedestrian crosswalk that leads over to both access to Community Park and also to Maple Point Middle School, so just want to comment that I'm pleased that we're moving forward with that.
Any other questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, 5-0. Thank you. Next up is consideration of 825 Elm Avenue Lot Consolidation Plan. I believe Mr. Kessler?
Nope.
I'll turn it over to the applicant, if they'd like.
Good evening. My name is Robert Snyder, I'm a professional land surveyor with Kelly Engineers, and I was responsible for preparing the lot consolidation plan. I can either give a short presentation, or Isaac can review, there's not really that much involved with it.
If you'd like to just describe kind of what's being proposed with the plan.
The owner is Richard Coleman. He purchased three 40-foot by 120-foot tax parcels in September of last year, and he received a zoning variance from a meeting of December 14, 2022, and on January 11 of this year. He obtained the variance, demerged the three parcels to create one building lot for a single-family home that was slightly undersized. The area was 14,400 square feet rather than the 15,000. We have a, the owner submitted a building permit plan, and during that process, a comment came up that it should, we should create a lot consolidation plan and come before the planning commission and the supervisors for approval. Last month, we obtained planning commission approval, and we're here before you tonight to answer any questions, and hopefully get approval.
No, thank you. I'll just reiterate that this plan before the board tonight is simply the lot consolidation plan. As the applicant mentioned, this creates a single lot for, you know, a single-family home development in this area, so that's a grading permit plan that would go through the typical process of review for a new single-family home. But prior to that, they needed to prepare the lot to be ready for that step in the process.
No waivers requested?
No, no waivers requested. They had the one zoning issue granted in January. We don't have any objection to recommending the approval for the plan that they have before you tonight.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
I make a motion to grant approval for the 825 Elm Avenue Lot Consolidation Plan, SLD number 23-3, with the following conditions. Applicant shall comply in full with all requirements in the Middletown Township subdivision and land development ordinance and the Middletown Township zoning ordinance unless relief has been granted by the body having jurisdiction.
Seeing there's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, are there any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have consideration to authorize a bid for a consult with the Parks and Rec Comprehensive Plan. Mr. Capera.
Good evening, Madam Chair. This is a procedural request for permission to go out to bid for a consultant for the Park and Rec Comprehensive Plan. The backstop is, back in March of 2022, the board approved, gave permission for us to apply for a grant with the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for a $55,000 grant. We were awarded that grant, and now we're just going through the processes of fulfilling that grant, which requires going out to bid for a consultant.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve for permission to proceed with the public bid of the Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Plan in accordance with the terms of the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Grant.
Is there been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a motion and a second, are there any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Capera.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I believe the chief is up next for consideration of authorizing advertisement of an ordinance to limit commercial vehicle parking and increase fines for parking violations.
Good evening, Ms. Payne, and fellow board members. Over the past year-plus, the police department has received several complaints, either directly to the PD itself or forwarded by Township Administration regarding the parking of trucks and/or commercial vehicles on the street in residential areas of the township. The township already has a truck parking ordinance, but it is dated and in need of modifying and updating to include differentiating a commercial vehicle and defining what a commercial vehicle is. This issue was given to Mr. Valla and the Citizens Traffic Commission for discussion and consideration. The police department is part of the CTC. Although it's taken a bit to get to this point tonight, the issue, I believe, has been handled thoroughly and very well by the Citizens Traffic Commission, all members of which agreed unanimously that such an ordinance is needed, either by updating the current ordinance or by drafting a new one. This commercial vehicle ordinance will specify what constitutes a commercial vehicle, the hours in which a commercial vehicle can park on a street in a residential area of the township, and the fine for any violations. Most all of our neighboring municipalities, and most all municipalities across the tri-state area, do have a commercial vehicle parking ordinance. This ordinance will be a last resort step in handling complaints of this nature. A violations would only be issued after either the vehicle owner or primary operator of the vehicle, if the owner's not local, has been notified by police and given sufficient opportunity to relocate the vehicle off a residential street. This ordinance will set the fine for this offense at $50 per offense, and this request will also serve to modify existing police parking fines, increasing the fine for all parking violations from $15 to $25, except commercial vehicle violation, truck parking, and snow ticket fines will increase from $15 to $50. Those three violations, no truck parking, no commercial vehicle parking, snow tickets will go from 15 to 50. All other parking offenses will go from 15 to 25. The board has any questions, which I'm sure you probably do, I'll be happy to take them.
I don't have a question. I will just say, first of all, I commend the department for the efforts that they have been making to try to deal with this issue. I have certainly gotten my fair share of complaints from residents about this issue, I'm sure my colleagues have too, and I want to commend the Citizens Traffic Commission for their efforts and ultimately their recommendation on this, so I'm glad we're moving forward with this.
And the CTC did a great job. I said it on a lot of the meetings, and they really did. They actually put a lot of time into, I was a little skeptical at first of the CTC, but I will say, Nick does an amazing job leading the CTC, and they really put a lot of time into all the issues that are brought to them, and they really try to look for the best solutions for the township. So thanks, Nick, for handling that, yep.
It's good to hear, thanks.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
I move to authorize the Township Solicitor to draft an advertising ordinance to, number one, prohibit parking of any vehicle used for commercial purpose on streets outside of manufacturing zoning districts between the hours of 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM with a fine of $50 for violations. Two, increase the fine for general parking violations from $15 to $25. And three, increase the fine for snow and ice emergency parking violations from $25 to $50.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seeing there's been a motion and a second, are there any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, 5-0. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Ms. Payne.
Next up, we have Ms. Bandari with the Q2 financial report for us.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you're doing well. As mentioned, I will be giving out the overview of the Quarter 2 2023 Revenue and Expenses, a brief overview of our investment fund, and last but not least, an update on our pension plans. I do also want to mention that at the end of the Quarter 2 presentation, I am going to give a capital update as well. It'll be a little bit more detailed. I am going to give a capital update as well. It'll be a little bit more detailed. I think this is working. All right. We are doing well compared to budget. We're at sixty-six percent of our revenue target and at about thirty-four percent of our expense target, which means our incoming revenue is above our expenses in quarter two. Most of this revenue is driven by EIT, the hike in interest rates and township service revenues. We're also seeing higher revenues on the Parks and Rec side that have continued from the last couple quarters. They're exceeding on their program fees over last year's revenue. As a reminder, again, I like to bring this up every time I present. Both Falls Township and Langhorn Borough have implemented the EIT tax this year, which has, the expectation was a three hundred and fifteen thousand hit. So far, we're seeing that EIT is panning out well. We're going to have to keep watching, obviously, over the next few months, but so far, we are seeing EIT kind of staying stable overall. I'm assuming it's mostly the salary increases year-over-year that's bringing in the higher revenue, which is almost kind of balancing out the hit from both the Falls Township and Langhorn Borough. But we'll have to keep watching. We still have a few more months to go before we can see the final numbers. On the expense side, we're right on target. We're where we should be. This is inclusive of our year-over-year wage increases. So overall, doing good. The next slide is our quarter two twenty twenty-three revenue actuals versus quarter two twenty twenty-two revenue and expenses. We're coming in at about ninety-four percent. But this is to be noted that ARPA funding was in last year's number. So if you take that out, apples to apples, we're actually coming in at a hundred and three percent over last year, which is actually better than anticipated. We actually expected overall revenue year-over-year to come down a little bit because of the EIT changes, transfer taxes, which we anticipated in the budget, where, you know, the market has stabilized now, so we're not seeing as high revenue coming in. And then the normalizing, like I said, of the real estate market. Most of this three percent increase is due to the EIT coming in stronger than anticipated, interest rates going up. We did, as you might have, might recall, put in some of our fund balance into a special investment fund account, which is gaining more interest for us. So that, plus just interest rates in general being higher year-over-year, is helping our revenue go up. Real estate taxes are stable overall. We're seeing them coming in as anticipated. And then, like I said before, township services, such as Parks and Rec, is doing well. We also had some additional grants come in for capital that we couldn't plan because we weren't sure about. So you're seeing that in the budget as well. Our twenty twenty, our Q two twenty twenty-three actuals versus twenty twenty-two expenditures are coming in at a hundred and two percent, which is two percent higher than last year, but that's anticipated when you look at the year-over-year increase. We actually budgeted overall a fifteen point eight percent increase year-over-year with salary and wages and just anticipated costs over, costs going up in general. But to see that it's only two percent so far this year is really good. It looks like we're doing really well from a cost-saving perspective and a budgeting perspective overall. So we'll have to keep watching this. Of course, we're only halfway through the year, but so far, it's looking good. On the general fund side, so I just wanted to give a more detailed look at our general fund, which is our day-to-day operating revenues and expenses. We're currently coming in at fifty percent of our revenue and at thirty percent of our expenses. If you recall, in quarter one of this year, our expenses are actually higher than our revenue. And I mentioned that was because, that that was normal because our revenue usually comes in in quarter two and quarter three. So now you can see that that is true, and we're seeing most of our revenue that should be coming in, coming in. And revenue is higher than expenses. Revenue in quarter two twenty-three versus quarter two twenty twenty-two, which you don't see here, but I just wanted to bring up, is coming at ninety-eight percent. Again, that has ARPA in it. When you take that out, we are actually just two percent lower than last time, which is what we planned, again, with the EIT change and the transfer taxes. So we're good with, on the budget side, and actually doing pretty good and normal compared to what we should be year-over-year as well. Expenses are coming in at a hundred and one percent, which is a percent higher than last year at this time. Again, we're trending, trending well and better than anticipated overall. Okay, this is just a high-level view of our capital, our capital fund. As I mentioned before, I'm going to go into more detail on a capital update after this financial presentation. We didn't want to mix it up, just so that we can go into more detail. Our capital fund is what we utilize, as you know, for our capital activities. Our revenue is coming in higher than expected at one hundred and twelve percent. As I mentioned earlier, we've gotten more grants, or most of the grants that we applied for are coming in, and we're seeing that in the budget. We also had some grant funding from last year that came in. So this is kind of evening, evening out our revenues overall. I also want to remind everyone that there is no real funding in this account. It's really grants that we look for in order to do all of our capital projects. So just wanted to throw that out there. Our expenses are currently coming in at twenty-five percent of budget. Many of our projects just really started in quarter three, quarter four. So we're still seeing, you know, some of that revenue that hasn't come in. We also do have some delays in projects and some that are anticipated to not start till next year. And like I said, I'll go into more detail on that soon. On the investment sides, we're doing well. The market rates have gone up. So we are seeing, you know, and interest rates have gone up. So we are seeing more gains than we had before. On the PFM managed side, which is our main investment account, we're showing a hundred and seventy-four thousand two hundred and sixty-three in interest earnings and on the investment fund, and then on the money market, fourteen thousand six hundred and fifteen. And then on the Univest side, we're showing a hundred and eleven, three fifty-one overall from original balance to current balance. So, I mean, overall, interest rates are, you know, stable right now, and we're getting, we're seeing the frutation of that. Okay, last but not least, for the financial presentation is the pension update. Again, kind of the same story. We're seeing, the market has stabilized, and interest rates have gone up. So we are seeing better refunds. I do want to make sure that I mention that this does not include cash. This is just the investment side of the pension. So we're showing a six point three percent gain on the non-uniform side and a six point one on the uniform side. I also wanted to mention that there's more cash sitting on the uniform side for anticipated retirements and such that are coming up, hence the reason why you'll see that difference in percent. Okay, so that wraps up my quarter two presentation. Before I go on to the capital update, I just wanted to ask if there were any other, any questions.
I have a quick question. On the first screen that you showed, the capital reserve, it was up six hundred eighty-three percent. Can you just explain that?
On the first slide you're saying?
I think it was the first slide that you showed.
A hundred and twelve percent, you mean?
Is that what it said? Maybe I'm, hold on.
Yeah, it's a hundred and twelve. That's, again, what I mentioned about the grants coming in compared to budget. So we, when we budget for the capital revenues, we don't always know exactly what we're going to get for grants until really the end of the year when we're done with budget. So that's why you're seeing a higher revenue coming in.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Any other questions?
I guess, knowing where we are in Q two, where do we think the outlook for twenty-three is? Knowing that we're pretty even on budget, there's not really a cushion there. Where do we think we're falling? In line, over budget, under budget?
I think we're going to be pretty much in line or maybe better on the revenue side. It's really hard to say, but I think overall, the revenue is coming in stable for the most part. Expenses, I think we've been keeping them down as much as possible. Again, you know, there are some funds that are a little bit different than others. I don't anticipate us going over budget at this time. I'm hoping to at least break even. Any other questions before I move on to capital? The capital update? No? Okay, thank you. So in front of you, and hopefully on the screens in a minute, you will see our capital improvement projects by category. This, hopefully, this document is a little bit more familiar to you guys. This is what we, you see usually while we're doing our capital planning. First off, I just wanted to remind you that this does not include ARPA funding. We still have about two point two five million in ARPA funding that we need to allocate for this year. We would like to allocate for this year. So what this, what this entails is our budgeted project cost without any funding, which you will see does not match our capital fund because this is like real, true project cost, whereas what we budget includes any funding that we might receive. The second column is where we're at currently to date. And then the last is our capital fund projected cost with funding. So as you go down the list, you know, starting with building and grounds, we are pretty much on budget if you look at the total cost perspective. We are a little bit higher on the municipal center improvements, but we are actually going to be pushing back or not doing the public hall chairs. So that keeps us on budget right there. Costs are a little bit higher in general, so we were trying to, to keep it in budget by not doing that project. For building and zoning, we still anticipate ordering an electric vehicle and having that done. The thirty-two five hundred includes grant funding that we received. Fire and emergency services, as you probably anticipated, the fire engine and equipment is a whole long process. We definitely will not be getting that this year or spending anything at this moment this year. So we're gonna, so that's zero for this year for now. The air packs and turnout gear have the grants included in them. We have two grants that we received, a federal grant and then a state grant. So most of the spend for those will be, will be cleared out with grants. On the IT side, we're pretty much, actually, we're a couple thousand under budget. We anticipated a higher spend on the computer replacement, but that ended up being less. But, and then the MDTs were a little bit higher, but if it all evened out pretty much. We needed more MDTs than we anticipated. So if you take that together, we're pretty much on budget, a little bit less than budget.
Are we removing the conference room technology?
For now, yes, we are. It's not something that we have time to do at this point, and it's better to just, you know, stick to the budget at this point. On the Parks and Rec side, everything is pretty much as budgeted except for the firefighters' park. This is related back to the road program. It's part of the road program, as you guys have seen. When they were doing the pickle bar courts, they actually found that the surface is vulnerable, and there's more work than anticipated. So there is going to be a little bit of an increase. We will know that final number soon, but at this point, we have four hundred and fifty thousand in there, which is about three hundred and forty-seven thousand from the original contract plus more, depending on what that surface cost is going to cost. Other than that, everything else is pretty much on target. On the police side, the vehicles and equipment include the RDA grants that we should be receiving for the body cameras and dash cameras. This is actually a, the cost actually will be over five years. We are receiving like two grants for this. One is for the dash cameras and one is for the body cameras. But the first two years will be paid with the grants. On the body cameras, I do want to note that the chief is working on that still. It hasn't been cleared. He should have more in a few days on how that will work. But the plan is to use those two grants to cover at least the first two years, and then it'll be a very minimal cost for us over the next three years from there. The active shooter simulator is done, a little bit over budget, but not too much. And then the entry toolkits are done as well. On the public work side, and please stop me if you guys have any questions, of course, and I'll ask at the end as well. So on the public work side, the road improvement project, actually, the bid came in, as you guys probably recall from when we got the contract, a little bit lower. It was coming in at eight hundred thousand. But we have four hundred thousand coming from our highway aid fund that we're going to be putting towards that. That's why you're seeing a little bit of a reduction there. The fuel tanks are higher than anticipated, and the amount that you see in front of you includes the change order that was approved today. So that is the final cost that we know of at this point with the, with the final change order. Everything else should be pretty much in line with what we budgeted, if not a tiny bit lower. And then I wanted to also remind you that the vehicles we get from Public Works have funding from the RDA, and then we have the, we have the machine road fund as well for shop equipment and such. So we have that budgeted and baked into this plan. On the storm sewer and drain side, Langhorn Gables is actually being pushed off. We applied for a grant, not pushed off, I shouldn't say that. We have actually applied for a grant, so we're waiting for the grant before we start the project. And then the emergency drainage inlets, MS four program, those are things that we can't fully anticipate costs at, so we have to keep that at budget in case something does come up. And then, last but not least on this, the neighborhood drainage projects. This was hillside and reeds, but at this point, it looks like we're only going to be able to complete hillside, hence the reason for the one eighty-five thousand budget. On the sustainability side, we have the recycling containers. We had a grant for that. So out-of-pocket costs is seventeen two eighty-seven. EV charging stations, again, we have a grant for that. So total cost is going to be two hundred and thirty-five thousand. Transportation, ADA curb ramps, so this is the original ADA curb ramp program that we budgeted for four hundred thousand. The, the actual contract came in a little bit higher. So with that, plus the engineering costs, we're looking at five twenty-five one hundred. But we also have the CDBG ADA ramp project, which I'm sure you guys all know about, so I won't go into too much detail unless you need me to. But we have a grant that we received that will be up for discussion in August. So more to come on that. Right now, we're hoping that that will just be even and that we'll be able to use the grant directly towards the project and not have to use any costs from the township. Swift and Woodborne is at nine hundred thousand nine fifty-three. This is the estimate received. It includes engineering costs. It's what the contract is at, plus engineering costs. Langhorn Yardley Tip is a little bit increased because of numerous cost, cost scope changes. So that's a little bit higher. And then the rest are pretty much on plan or not happening at this point this year, and will probably have to be pushed back. Overall, our projected budgeted costs were about nine point nine million. We're looking at about six point nine at the end of the year. Any questions? I know that was a lot.
I'm sorry. Could you go back to the storm sewer and drains?
Sure.
And explain a little further what won't be completed? What is being completed and what won't be completed?
Sure. So Langhorn Gables Phase Two, we're waiting for a grant to be approved. We've worked on a grant, so until that grant comes through, we can't complete, or we don't want to complete it. It's going to be completed with the grant. Emergency drainage projects, that's just something we budget every year and need to keep in case of any emergencies. There's no specific projects really going on allocated to that. It's just as things come up. The inlet top and collars are staying the same. We're keeping that, the MS four program. Again, it's a cost that we have every year that we budget for. Nothing specific at this point, but we do need to keep that in there just in case. And then neighborhood drainage project, it was hillside and reeds, but we're only doing hillside at this point. Just because we were, hillside's going out to bid, but reeds hasn't gone out to bid yet.
Okay. Do we know when that will?
Okay, and do we know when that will, when that's gonna happen?
Because to clarify the, I guess, delay with reeds, it's in the permitting and going through that stage of the project, so time-wise, we anticipate it wouldn't be this calendar year, but it would be hopefully shortly thereafter, so we'd look to, you know, incorporate that when we take a look at the twenty twenty-four budgeting.
Okay, thank you.
Can you just walk me through the firefighters' park? And the costs that are associated with, with the four hundred and fifty thousand?
Sure, so if you recall, as part of the twenty twenty-three road program, firefighters' park was one of the alternate bids that was on there. So the cost that, that was approved at that point was around, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but it was around three hundred and forty or three hundred and fifty thousand. But since then, it was found that there was a vulnerable surface on the pickleball court that's causing some work, more anticipated work that needs to be done. That change order or that, and that information hasn't been given to us yet, so this is a ballpark estimate just based on what possible, what we could possibly see plus engineering costs. More to come as we get that, but we don't have that at the moment. This is just what we anticipate based on the estimates we were given.
We're waiting for a change order from the contractor so that we will bring that to you for the full amount.
Correct, for approval.
A seam popped up, and we might need to dig down further than expected.
So we'll see that on our budget meetings?
You'll, you'll probably see it in an upcoming meeting. Pickleball, pickleball courts are very important.
Again, these are projections. Some of them obviously may change. It's just what we can see at the moment, as much as possible.
And what are we doing about the fire engine? Are we, like, reserving that millions that we have it next year to spend? Are we, what are we doing, like, knowing that we're pushing it?
So, yeah, I mean, of course, it's gonna come up again in the next, you know, in our capital meeting when we talk about twenty twenty-four projects. We do definitely need it. It's just that it's, there's a long process with the ordering of it, and we were hoping we would get an RDA grant and another grant, and so far, we just haven't gotten that. It was, the RDA one was denied, and it was also based on timing. We knew that we might have to put money down this year in order to order it, but we weren't gonna be able to get the engine to, until future years. So it definitely will come up in the twenty twenty-four. We do need it budget, but we're definitely, we're just, we, we can't spend it this year because we're not gonna be able to get it.
We're waiting for the standard spec to be agreed upon before we embark upon ordering, and there's an eighteen to twenty-four month.
Correct.
Turnaround time. So we don't typically quote-unquote reserve it, but you will definitely see it in next year's budget. A lot of the things that you see that are not happening is primarily just because of running out of time and the amount of people to manage projects, so things that aren't being done are, most likely, you'll see them at your budget meeting and, capital budget meeting in August.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Mandari. With that, I will actually move on to other business. I'll start with Mr. Kessler.
Thank you, Ms. Bain. I do want to just mention a couple things about the storms that we got over this past weekend. Obviously, our, some of our neighbors in Lower Bucks here really had some hardships, and the amount of rain that fell in our area, and some areas were between like four and six inches within a two-hour period of time. You know, it's always brought up, like, what year storm that is. To put that into better terms, I think, is like the odds of that storm happening in a, in a given time. The four to six inches in two hours is like a one-in-one-thousand probability, so that's the, the one-thousand-year storm. In our area, we didn't get quite the one-thousand storm range. We're more in like the two-hundred to five-hundred-year storm, which is still very significant. So obviously, you mentioned Silver Lake Road, and we're actively working to identify and address that as, as quick as we can. We encourage folks, if there are issues with, you know, the, the stormwater or, you know, any kind of damage, to let us know. We work closely with the Department of Public Works to address that as quickly as we can. I do want to encourage folks to not reposition or go around barriers that we have, especially for a closed road. It's in the best interest of public safety for, for those barriers. As much as it's a bit of an inconvenience, we, you know, hope that people follow those and, and take those seriously. If you, in the, in the issue with Silver Lake Road, it's currently, you can see where it was undermined and the pavement's actually wavy, so that obviously is being repaired. If that's something that folks see, that usually means there is not the stability underneath, so it's, it's not safe to drive on in a vehicle especially. In some cases, you know, you don't want to even really walk in those areas. So please take those barriers seriously. And just a reminder, if there are floodwaters that come through with some of these intense storms, it's never a good idea to try to drive through them. They, they change quickly, and, and as we've seen, they can be really, you know, powerful and, and, you know, a threat to, to anything that they are trying to push through. So I just wanted to give a kind of an update on what kind of rainfall we really saw this past weekend. You know, we do our best for projects to design for kind of the most frequent storms and ones we can expect, but Mother Nature sometimes has different things in mind, so we try to make sure folks are safe so we can repair anything that might have been damaged in those types of storms. So if there's any questions that folks have, feel free to, you know, reach out to us as, as the engineering office, or, like I said, if it goes through the Department of Public Works, we'll work closely with them to, to visit all of these sites and, and make sure they're back in a, in a safe manner for the residents.
Is that area of Lower Silver Lake, is it Silver Lake Road? The same area that was damaged either last year or a couple of years ago?
It was like two and a half years ago, I think.
Yeah, is it the exact same area?
It's the same stretch of road, yeah. Unfortunately, we're, there's a, you know, it's in County Park area kind of around it, and the, the county bridge that crosses the creek there, when that volume of water comes down, which was the case a couple of years ago as well, the bridge really isn't wide enough to have that volume of water go underneath it, so it finds its way around, and the damage wasn't as, I would say, in disarray as it was, you know, two and a half years ago, but it definitely got undermined again, unfortunately, and, you know, it's something that needs repair while it's closed. We're adding, we're looking to add, and we'll, we'll have a better idea with the contractor, you know, what we can add to where that stretch of road is to have water, you know, find relief instead of like building up along the side. So that's something we're looking to implement to, hopefully, you know, as these storms come around, you know, we hope not too often, but when they do happen again, that the water can get through a little better and not cause the, the road to get closed again for repairs.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Mr. Vallah?
Thank you. I did want to share that the Middletown Community Foundation is gonna be collecting school supplies at National Night Out on August first, so be checking social media to see what school supplies can be donated to our local students.
Thank you. Mr. Esposito?
Yes, thank you. I just want to announce that the board did hold an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss labor and litigation matters.
Thank you. Ms. Tjolikus?
I have nothing, thank you.
Ms. Hannah?
I wanted to say thank you to the Middletown Township manager, Megan. Everybody has worked so tirelessly on these grants. You really save us a lot of money, and we greatly appreciate it. Also, thank you, Mr. Kessler, for the information and the reminders to be safe when there's inclement weather. Thank you.
Ms. King?
I just wanted to thank all of the, and, and I feel for all the first responders this weekend, so thank you for all your efforts. There are a lot of them are volunteers, and, you know, when they're going out in those waters to help rescue people, they're, they're also putting their self, themselves in danger, so thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Ms. Kopp?
Nothing, brother, thank you.
Mr. Kisek?
Nothing, thanks.
And I have nothing, so with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
A second?
A second.
We are adjourned.